Good evening and welcome to Webster's Board of Appeals meeting for April 13th, 2021. This evening we have two tabled items on the agenda and four scheduled matters. Although I don't have a copy, we do have proof of legal publication for each of this evening's scheduled items. We do have a... A little more this evening. If you could color roll.
Mr. Newtown.
Here.
Mr. Borum.
Here.
Mr. Stockenbeck.
Here.
Mrs. Volvo.
Here.
Mr. Howza.
Here.
Mr. Delarco.
I am here remotely.
Mr. Artuto.
Here.
Okay, if you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first tabled item this evening is 1094 Five Mile Line Road. We printed this application at the last meeting and the board requested to table us to have the applicant look at a couple of other options for consideration. And the board wanted to go again and take another look at the proposed addition. So...
Can you hear me well?
Yes. And there have been no amendments to the application?
That's correct. The agenda deadline was before I was able to contact the state slip and show explaining what she's decided to move forward with. Therefore, we do not need to read this back into the minutes. So if you would like to describe your current approach to this addition, we would appreciate it.
Yes, and I thank you all for coming down and having another look at it. I really do appreciate it. The... What we've come up with is to try and settle for maybe 10 feet by 28, where we were asking for 12 by 29. The side entrance, which we looked at the very first thing that we ever did and got estimates and everything on it was that it's totally useless. Our living room is so small that that is the only side that we have for regular living with... We have two staircases and a doorway on the other three walls so long that that side entrance wouldn't be feasible. The only thing that we have actually is the front entrance. And we're willing to go to 10 feet by 28. That's agreeable. The two things that I'm requesting are I'd like to fix the porch which is deteriorating and also upgrade the space with proper entrance for the north side.
Anything else you'd like out?
I think that's it.
Okay, so just to recap what I believe I heard was your proposal instead of 12 foot by 28 foot wide, the 12 foot is what approaches the front setback. You're reducing that 2 feet to 10 feet. The rationale of one of the recommendations from this board the last time is to take a look at maybe something along the south side of the house, the structure, the main structure. I believe what I heard you say is that based on staircase configuration and the desire to have a proper front entrance, that would prohibit you from moving it, relocating it, this addition to the south side. Is that correct?
Actually, no. On the south side, if we were to do the south side, that would mean that we would have four walls that were not... It would be used in the living. It's a very small living room. We have three walls that are taken off with two stairways and one with a door. So that would be doing the whole thing. And of course, it wouldn't fix the problem with the porch.
I understand, you know. Thanks.
The front porch has to be repaired anyways. It's still activated, so... To the applicant's point, they have to fix the front porch, number one. So if they did do an addition on limits to construction problems, they still want it. I can see why they'd desire to do to repair that porch, enhance the porch, maybe with some renovations on the front of the house.
Well, this reduces the new act by putting out 10 feet. It's really only 3 feet yet, and it's located right now. So it's... The appearance of all of the houses is completely aligned and follow more into the pattern of the rest of the neighborhood.
There's other homes that are...
Note the existing enclosed porch is 7 feet off of the front of the main structure. This proposal will be 10 feet, so 3 feet greater than what exists. And I think she came back with a good compromise from the compromise we presented. I think your proposal is, as Mr. Stockenbeck said, in alignment with one of our suggestions for suggestions of compromise. I don't recall if you went through secret or public comment or last name. Do you have this one?
Don't think we did secret.
No secret.
We did a public kind of... I don't recall if we closed any or not. I don't know if we closed them.
Okay. We'll just... For some time, I see our section 617 of the environmental code. I'll make a motion for type 2 secret. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. I guess I should have read the notice again in the format. Are we accepting comments as well?
Yes, if you keep going as you... Wait, sorry, I have the number up.
Okay. This meeting, we will also accept public comment via the phone. That number is 872-7011. We will give this a couple of minutes, see if anybody calls in, and then move on. How's that sound?
I don't think anybody will call unless I'm...
Okay. We're going to go ahead and close the public portion of this meeting and move on to a review of the standards or any findings.
This is the Chevy Blue three number two. It has testimony of higher table proceedings incorporated into the minutes. Can I, which are about to make your decision?
Yes.
The applicant came in last meeting and the board asked her to consider a couple of options for possibly moving the porch around to the side of the house, south side, or reduce the size of the porch to 10 feet instead of 12 as requested. And after some consideration, the applicant has decided to reduce the porch size to 10 feet in width, which reduces the variance by 2 feet. So I did take another look at that project and there are other houses that far down the road there, similar setback. The house has to be... It has to probably be 120, 123 years old, some stone foundations. In those days, that's where they built the houses, closer to the road. There is no detriment created nearby properties. Nobody has commented negatively about this application. The benefit is not achieved by other method. As the applicant said, she wants to rebuild that front porch anyways, and this is an opportunity for her to enhance that front porch, maybe a little bit larger, and still enhance the porch and quality of the house. The request is not substantial. It's really only 3 feet more than what she has now on the porch. The porch is only 7 feet wide, which wants to be 10 feet wide. There are no adverse physical or environmental impacts. There's no slight problems, no traffic or anything like that. Difficulty is not self-created, really. It's, as I said, it's quite a old historic house and she just wants to make that front porch usable. It's only 7 feet wide. Now you can hardly put a chair on it.
Correct.
Not undesirable change. Actually, I think it will enhance the look of the house and improve the quality of the porch. And as I said, it's only a 3-foot difference from what exists, so it's not too bad.
Excuse me. Now, the width of it would be 28 feet, correct?
You want it to full width of the house, but we're looking at the front setback, so if you're interested in...
Okay, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So with that, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance to a house located at 1094 Five Mile Line Road. The applicant's case slip is asking for a 21-foot front setback with 60 feet of width associated with replacement of the existing enclosed porch and expanded 3 season room on 0.40 acre parcel. Evans SBL number 079.18-1-57, located in R3 Single Family Residential District under section 225-11 Code of the Tower of Webster. And that porch will be 10 feet by 28 feet in width, which is 28 feet is the existing width of the house.
It's 29 right now.
So you're coming... So it's going to be 28 though, you're coming?
There you go.
Okay. Move to the curb. Okay. Also...
Second. Mr. Borum.
Aye.
Mrs. Volvo.
Aye.
Mr. Howza.
Aye.
Mr. Stockenbeck.
Aye.
Mr. Newtown.
Aye. Okay, your variance has been approved. A couple of conditions apply. Must obtain unnecessary governmental permits, including a pound building permit, and one year meaningful construction is set to expire one year from this evening.
All right. Thanks all so much for your time. I do appreciate it.
Good luck. Okay, the next tabled item is Jiffy Louvre located at 1161 and 71 Bridge Road and 974 Jackson Road.
It's been changed, sorry, that went to the record because there's a petition on the road variance. Located at 1161 and 1171 Bridge Road and 974 Jackson Road. Advocate Development Services LLC is requesting area variances to allow profile in. Lot area of 36,537 square feet and a minimum of 45,000 square feet is required. A 9-foot north side setback for a house at 974 Jackson Road for 20 feet is required. A 1.5-foot side, south side buffer area for 20 feet is required. A 15-foot east rear buffer area for 25 feet is required, associated with the construction of a 3,000-square-foot Jiffy Louvre auto care shop and a proposed 0.84 acre parcel consisting of SPL numbers 080.13-2-1, 080.13-2-2, and 080.13-2-52, located in an MC medium intensity commercial district under section 225-17 of the Code of the Tower of Webster.
Hi, nice to be here again. I'm Betsy Brog with Woods O'Viat. You were here last month on the application. Coler is here. I'm not going to put in her last name.
Harry Marganowski, for the record.
So as the board will recall, when we were here last month, an additional variance was identified and we had presented the application, but it's been re-publicized and the additional variance was added. We're having to address that. The board also requested a drawing so that you could more clearly identify where the current property lines are located and where the proposed property lines will be. So given any questions about that? We have... Hopefully this shows you clearly that we have four lots currently. One, two, three, four. And we are carving out this piece for the Jiffy Louvre project, leaving the owner's remaining property for the time being combined into a single parcel. That could change. I know that he's trying to find users for that property. So there's no current plans of the remainder of the land. So what we provided for you that we reviewed last month, we did go through the reasons for the specific variances that we applied for. Again, to remind the board, one being for the lot size of the Jiffy Louvre parcel, the second being for the, I guess it's the northerly property line of the house that will remain standing at 974 Jackson Road. And then we have added buffer variances relative to the location of the dumpster in the corner here. So it's for the convention on south and then on the east. Oh, sure. Sorry. Thanks. Yeah, so the additional variance is for the buffer relative to the location of the dumpster, again, on the south and on the east. I do think that that is the appropriate location on the site for the placement of the dumpster. I don't know that there's any spot that would be preferable. It's a corner lot and this is the best location to keep it away from visibility from the street. We certainly wouldn't want it in the front yard and we're not near any neighbors. Again, this parcel is owned medium intensity commercial MC and the remaining lands are also zoned MC. And then our neighbors to the south are residential, it's commercial on the opposite side of Bridge Road and Jackson Road. So I think that we meet the requirements for all of the area variances. The board did grant the use variance at the last meeting based on this specific proposal. So I think we've addressed that it does not change the character of the neighborhood. In respect to the specific variances, the lot size really allows us to have all of the requirements for the Jiffy Louvre site plan met. These are the only variances needed. And even though it looks like we have four items listed, if you really look at what they are, they're really internal to the existing configuration of the property. We're dealing with the existing conditions in the best way possible and again, preserving the opportunities for the remaining property to be reused in the future. So I think the lot size is hopefully acceptable to the board. There is no negative, no adverse impact, no detriment on any adjacent property from any of the variances. Not from the lot size, not from the buffer variances, and not from the setback for the remaining house. Those remaining lands are all owned by the same property owner and if anything, the way that this is laid out is intended to be as protected as possible of the nearby residential We'd be happy to answer any questions or provide you with any additional information.
Where's the lot area of lot number 2? Proposed lot.
The total of that? So the proposed area of lot 2 would be 88,926 square feet. And that's the whole remainder of everything with the Jiffy Louvre parcel. And that parcel at the corner of Bridge and Jackson today is just over only 18,000 square feet. So we're pretty much doubling that. It's still obviously not conforming, but it's a lot better than it exists today.
Well, I would think that because the lot number 2 is located in the MC area and you're establishing there's a lot that would need to receive a variance also.
No. I... What are you referring to, Dan?
Because you're three subdividing the three lots, you're establishing, well, obviously Jiffy Louvre parcel, which is lot number one.
Right.
You're requesting variance for that this evening, but it sounds like lot number 2 would require a variance also consistent with the plan.
Lot number 2 is everything else.
I understand, but you're establishing that and it doesn't conform to the lot area.
Lot 2 over...
Oh, everything else. I'm looking at your blue lines.
I was just...
No, those are the original.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So the feeling what it is, is that if you look at the original layout of the lot, there are two lots. You know, there's a smaller lot on the corner. So we're really bringing it more into conformity with the code, bringing the corner lot more into conformity with code.
You're combining all that with the Ridge Road parcel.
Right.
We were asking last time to show the many a thought a little bit better, which now I look at, it's more confusing.
I know. No, never mind.
At the end of the day, if you look at the board request, is anything... They could carve up and make this a highly irregular shaped block 2 to achieve the additional 7,000 square feet. Is that in the best interest of this project? Probably not.
Because of the problems down the road.
It's going to cause other variance required. The 9-foot north side setback for the house, is that really... I mean, it's internal of the property. They probably are going to go under a wagon and say that that thing's probably not going to sit there in another two years, right? That house is probably not even going to be there. So does that really change our outlook on this project? The house is going to be there, right? The internal buffers, both for the east and the south, you know, they could rearrange the dumpster, they could do a few other things, but does that make this project better? I don't think so.
Well, and the buffers are combined, so it's 20 feet between the two parcels. We have to get 20 feet. So if we only have 1.5 feet on this parcel, there's opportunity with the rest of the development of the property to take on the remaining buffer and really not affect anything. If that works within this stage of development. And it's internal to the parcel and it doesn't change... It doesn't change anything outside of that piece of property.
It's internal to their whole development. The last proposal I was hearing, they had some objections from the residential neighbors to the south, so I think it's to the advantage to keep that Jiffy Louvre to the north as much as possible because it might push any future development on that lot to the south.
You're referring to the strip plaza that was proposed a couple of years ago? Is that what you're referring to? Yes.
Yeah, because somebody did come in and get approval. Variances already, but the project didn't go through, but we had to give some buffer variances to the south, so we're up keeping that Jiffy Louvre lot line further to the north despite we have 1.5-foot buffer setback. It's a left fusion of the two places.
Any other comments or questions before we move to secret?
The only thing I... And it's really not a concern for lot 1, but it's a concern for the development and the variance of the lot is when the previous proposal came before us, the developer had worked at the board such that the residences to the south of this, that there was enough buffering and enough buffering and protection to protect them from the impact of having a commercial intensity use. I don't know if we can condition that, and granting the lot 1, lot 2, what you're asking for right now, that in future development respect with the board previously approved to protect those houses to the south.
Are you...
We have those... Yeah, just the buffering that was set up.
I think they're going to have to come back in for a review of whatever they've developed here and then we can take into consideration based on the previous...
Requested variance.
...variance to see what that was.
Okay.
Right on how that came in tonight.
Did.
This is that...
I just don't want to slate it there.
Right. So I think it's more of an occupation that comes down upon future development on lot 2 that we reflect back on the previous variance that was granted and take into consideration some of the special conditions that we had posed on the variance.
There was a concern that I had was the... If we could ask for some sort of screening to those neighbors to the south at this point in time, because we really don't know how, you know, one parcel to the south will be heavily populated. And yeah, 1.5 feet, I don't know if there's enough room to provide any type of, I don't know, idea of a fence and they could provide any kind of screening to the south.
Can I talk to the conditions about seeing the plan?
Well, there is a plan.
Proper parcel to the south.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but it would provide immediate protection to the south, to those residents. So we really don't know how long, what time period it will need when this parcel needs
We're all for a... What do we have? I think the Jiffy Louvre building is maybe 140 feet, would you say, for the linear property in a single family residential line?
Correct. Yeah, this here is the 100-foot buffer line that they have to maintain and then we're going to have the whole number four.
So it seems to me that any buffer related to that southerly zoning line in residential neighborhood would really relate to anything that happens in the future, which would of course be subject to approvals at that time.
That's going to require an obvious interference when we call plot 2.
And the Jiffy Louvre building was placed specifically to have the traffic pattern go east-west also. You know, it doesn't change what the project is, but you know, it was done to have as little impact to the neighbors as possible.
We can... We'll come back to some further questions that's proceeding. For some time, I see our section 617 of the environmental code. I'll make a motion for type 2 secret. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. That would be anybody in this room is welcome to step up to the podium and state your position. In addition to that, if you are a caller, please dial 872-7011 if you wish to speak for or against this application. Last call, anybody wishing to speak for or against this application? Okay.
Do we get any comments from the committee?
We did receive a letter from WCAAL, Webster Citizens Action League, that we will put on record with the file. Webster Town Zoning Board member. The Webster Citizens Action League has a mission to advocate on behalf of the town and village residents. Zoning and planning issues have a massive impact on the lives and well-being of Webster residents. With this in mind, we strongly urge you to deny the area variances being asked for by the proposed Jiffy Lube project at the corner of Ridge and Jackson Roads. The proposed variance fails to meet five conditions set down for granting variances. The variance will have a harmful effect on the residential neighborhoods to the south of this property by adding traffic, noise, and lighting. This project is not in character with those residential areas. This is MC District, by the way, not a residential district. This applicant does not need to design this large facility. The facility, it must be remembered, required a used variance and was not anticipated to be in this zone. The variances asked for are substantial. The lot area is about twenty percent less. The nine-foot south setback being asked for is half that required, a fifty percent reduction. These substantial variances add to the impact the project will have on the area. Note that these variance requests are internal to a lot owned, which is still MC, by the same owner. These are internal variances. The traffic, lighting, and noise will all have negative effect on the adjacent residential area. The board might be fooled into consideration in considering the commercial area to the west, but with the exception of a single residence, there's a good distance between that commercial area and nearby residential areas, and a firm was constructed long ago as well as a barrier. Not following up. The applicant has created this hardship hardship. They are packing too much project in too small a space. They have chosen a use that requires too much area for the lot. There are alternatives available to combine lots or find new use. The zoning conditions did not create hardship. For these reasons, WCAAL urges you to deny these area variances. This project does not meet the criteria for relief and better or more compatible projects could be constructed on this side. Anybody care to address any of those others? I, in terms of the size of the facility, I think three thousand square foot is much smaller than probably any other maintenance facility, auto maintenance facility in all Webster, I would think, unless it's a modern prop shop. Don, what's the size of the, the Monral Muffler, or one of those, we don't, Josh, that'd be seven, eight thousand square. Do you have any data on that? An auto zone?
I don't, but I can tell you that the size of this facility is probably no larger than many of the other, this is in the MC District, and we didn't need any setback variances for the building or any other variances that would indicate that the site does not fit the size of development.
As far as the traffic, lighting, and noise, I think the bay reduction, there's four bays total, right? So, that's not a lot of cars in and out of there.
No, actually, we discussed the number, I mean, they anticipate starting out about fifteen customers a day, and I think their target, you know, if they do great, is forty. I think thirty is really the bay, you know, biggest of all.
The other, we know, because we discussed it in the past, but the other uses have had much greater impact on traffic than this. We'll put this in the file.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
So, probably, I think he should give the public an opportunity to comment with his place in information records, because this group would have to be lengthy, but this is an opportunity they'd like. And I would also recommend that we would need into record, I believe we received it into the record at the last meeting, but we, they referenced again in the part D, which opened a letter that spelled out the difficulty in the applicant not being able to generate a reasonable return for the permitted use, which is set forth in that letter, which is , I guess, financial information, real estate, great work, to be, so, uh, if I had to duplicate our motion, I do.
Correct, I believe we adopted that letter, both the Caliber Letter dated January twenty-second, twenty-one, and the March eighth Woods Elgert Gilman Letter dated March eighth, twenty-one, for the used variance that was granted at the last meeting. We would, I think your recommendation is to adopt the March eighth and the January twenty-second Letter again, for the record, as part of the permits, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, so, we haven't closed the public portion, because I just read the letter. So, the public portion is still open. So, I'll just give it one last call, eight seven two seventy eleven, if you would like to speak for or against this application. I also received an online comment that I can read whenever you guys are ready. No, just, oh, it's just, okay, this was the friend of mine. Gotcha. Yep, I will read this as well. This is from Richard Bronken at nine sixty Everwood Run. The intersection of Jackson and Ridge Road is a busy intersection. Are any plans being made to address traffic that this business will create? I see on the site plan, the entry and exits for Ridge Road side of the business. Are any entry and or exits planned for Jackson Road? It appears there is one. If there is such an exit, make a left turn onto Jackson should be prohibited. In fact, the whole idea of an entry-exit onto Jackson should not be allowed. It just makes sense.
Conny, I would want to do that.
I can say that the planning board has reviewed a concept plan before we, before we came here tonight, before we made the zoning board application, they did review the concept plan. I don't think they had any issues with the, with the driveway access. I personally was not at that meeting, Jerry Gold, who was totally tied to that one.
I just like to point out, if any view been by Starbucks, or Wendy's, or McDonald's, which are a lot of uses on this corner, cars are wrapped around those buildings at lunchtime. Traffic generation is astronomical. This is a much, much lighter traffic generation than, like, the past food restaurant, which would be a lot of use. So, I don't count any of the traffic in this issue.
And once again, there, I think you told us fifteen cars is their expected, you know, occupancy as they're, upon startup.
Yeah, they expect, you know, thirty a day is what it's capable, Jiffy Lube would expect.
At full ramp.
At full ramp up, so start using around fifteen.
And that would be addressed by the planning board in regard?
This is a very low traffic generator in this part of the east.
You can, you can tell by, there's nowhere to queue up and back up traffic, like at a Dunkin' Donuts or a Chick-fil-A, where we run into traffic going down the road. I think the lot size keeps it going.
Uh, we're going to close out the public portion of the meeting and return the discussion back to the board. Any further comments or questions for the applicant? Last meeting was, was it the last?
March one, two, third?
Twenty-third. You'd also, I'd also propose that we adopt the discussion, because we did discuss these variances as well, prior to the next meeting. We would adopt those, meaning that it says, you know, finals, or any determination made this evening on April thirteenth. Anyone care to proceed with finals? Or is everybody fine, adopting the March eighth, twenty-one Letter from Woods, Olivia?
The only thing that's changed really is we addressed the buffers. I think the board agrees that those buffers are internal to the project, and whoever buys that lot two is going to have, is going to be commercial MC anyways, so they have to deal with it at that point. It doesn't really affect anybody else.
And I think the only other thing that I would add is if we, you know, if they tried to seek the additional seven, seven, eight thousand square feet, as Don pointed out, we're going to create additional variances, no matter what. There's, this plan provides a balance. Okay, so I would make a recommendation that we adopt the March eighth, twenty-one Letter, where it has discussed the related area variances and all items of the five standards we addressed. Plus, in addition to our discussion, and the March twenty-third, twenty-one variances. Okay, with that said, I will make a motion to grant an area variance for Jiffy Lube located at eighteen, eleven sixty-one and eleven seventy-one Ridge Road and nine seventy-four Jackson Road. Applicant Guggenheim Development Services, L C, which would include the following area variances. A lot area of thirty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-seven square feet, where a minimum of forty-five thousand square feet is required. A nine-foot north side setback for house at nine seventy-four Jackson Road, where twenty feet is required. A one point five foot south side setback, side buffer area, where twenty feet is required. A fifteen-feet foot east rear buffer area, where twenty-five foot is required. Associated with the construction of a three thousand square foot Jiffy Lube Auto Care Shop on proposed point eight four acre parcel, consisting of S P L numbers zero eight zero dot one three dash two dash one, zero eight zero dot one three dash two dash two, and zero eight zero dot one three dash two dash fifty-two, located in an MC medium intensity commercial district, under section two two five dash seventeen of the town of Webster, of the code of the town of Webster. Second.
Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mrs. Lola?
Aye.
Mr. Housman?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Okay, few conditions applied. Must obtain necessary governmental permits, including town building permits, and any other sign, or that stuff that may be needed in the future. And one year, maybe, hopefully, it's watching this set, it expires one year from this evening. I'm assuming you've got another trip back to the planning board, obviously, correct?
Yes, we have.
Final approvals? And anything that I'm missing? Good? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Next on the agenda is twelve thirty-eight Lake Point Drive.
Twelve thirty-eight Lake Point Drive Garage Edition, located at twelve thirty-eight Lake Point Drive. Applicant Neil Argento is requesting area variance to allow a thirteen-foot side setback, where twenty feet is required, associated with the construction of a twenty-foot by forty-foot garage edition on a point eight eight acre parcel, given S P L number zero five zero point zero one dash one dash eight zero, located in R one, single-family residential district, under section two two five dash nine of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening.
Right, we thank everybody for entertaining us tonight. My name's Kevin Feork, I'm here assisting Neil Argento.
Can you, um, the mic up a little bit? There you go, thank you.
Want me to start that again?
Please.
Okay. My name's Kevin Feork, I'm here assisting Neil Argento, the owner of the property that we're asking for any area variances for. Okay, Neil would like to build a four-car garage, it's a stacking garage, it's twenty feet wide, forty feet long, and he's going to need a variance of seven feet, but it's okay, it's twenty, so it'll end up being approximately fifteen feet from the lot line. It'll be a front entrance garage, that's pretty much what's in the neighborhood. Twenty feet is generally the minimum width for a front two-car garage, you know, this one's extra long. Neil has six cars that he stores off-site, and he'd like to be able to get them onto his own property so that he doesn't have to pay storage in the future. He doesn't do any mechanical work per se on the cars, he does spend quite a lot of time polishing and cleaning them, and testing them. It's not a business, uh, he just, it's, it was parked there. We did kind of take the neighbors, the immediate neighbor and the adjacent neighbors, provided letters of support for this action.
Anything else besides that?
No, more, I wish to ask you for it.
Okay. Since you just brought it up, I will note that Josh Whitman, residing at twelve thirty-four Lake Point Drive, Mary Elizabeth Salos at twelve thirty-nine Lake Point Drive, and Chris McCosby at twelve forty-two Lake Point Drive, submitted letters of support dated March twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and will go on the bottom.
I stopped by this late, this afternoon, spoke to you, uh, studying most affected by the material last, and mentioned that we had absolutely no issues with the promise that was being proposed. He thought, uh, we probably clean up the yard a little better, it was all hundred percent he had, right?
Twenty feet's pretty minimal, way to go, two-car garage. But there's already a driveway going on that side of the house. Correct, the, uh, asphalt driveway. But his garage now is a sidewalk, right here, so the driveway does exist here, and, uh, so it, it, he did line the driveway slightly, or of course, in the process of doing that, but, but that's because it's really, instead of the driveway being twenty feet wide, it's like fifty feet wide now. So, he did stone the driveway up here, but it's not going to, it's actually going to remove a little bit of asphalt, be, because the, uh, new- Be- because the, uh, new garage, uh, right now there's edge fault to the back of the house. So some of the, some of the asphalt will be removed. And yeah, twenty feet is, is pretty minimal for, for the western two-car garage. We, we felt that was kind of, uh, minimal really for our situation.
So if you're, um, are you building the addition in that house right now?
Um, I'm assisting there, yes.
Is that going to connect to the garage, the post, the post garage?
No. No, there will be, uh, there's gonna be fifteen feet separation between the in-law that's being built in that now in the garage section.
Uh, one thing that I noticed that, uh, in, in the back, obviously, due to the weight of this, uh, most curious could be impacted by that. There's not the, it's a pretty deep lot. And then three lots can emerge in the back of the home. Off of, I guess it's South Shore Place, which could be, uh, the north behind and two-fifty. There's one neighbor that comes in on two-fifty. There's a lot of green space to the north. Pursuant to NYCR section six seventeen and the bar mile code, I'll make a motion for type-two seeker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, this meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. You can call in to eight-seven-two-seven-zero-one-one. While we're giving that a minute or two, I just reiterate, we did receive three letters of support, uh, from the, uh, the neighbors. All in the immediate area.
Can I speak?
Uh, absolutely. I'm going to guess that you're a neighbor two houses down that would like to speak for this application.
Absolutely.
All right, feel free.
Sure. My name is David Behrman. I'm.
Ah, you have to step up, state your name and address.
Okay.
And then you better make him stick around to support your.
Sorry, wait, no. My name is David Behrman. I'm the property owner at twelve forty-six Lake Point, uh, two floors down from, from them. I know that I know the area. I know the street. I know their house. And obviously, no problems. Plenty of space between the structures there. What they're requesting is not too much to ask. So just simple and sweet for the record, I support what they're asking for for the, uh, side setback variance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last call, eight-seven-two-seventy-eleven. Uh, that concludes the public portion of this meeting. Any, uh, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I was originally concerned with the width of it. Um, a lot of the houses in the neighborhood look like they've got a third, third-day garage addition. But the two-bay, I was concerned looking at the, um, looking at the application that that was going to appear oversized and out of character. But the distance of the house at twelve thirty-eight to the neighbor at twelve thirty-four, there's still going to be enough separation between the house even after this addition. The fact that we can have a letter of support from that neighbor and they're actually discussing that neighbor. It, it does not appear that it's going to be excessive. It's not an oversized garage. It's just that it, it could look like it was extra, except that you don't really see the original garage with the house because it is a sidewalk. All of the other garages on the street are front loads, so it would kind of now have the edge out of the house.
Okay. If you have a stuffy, uh, client?
The request is not out of character in the neighborhood in that this was the only house that I saw that had a side-load garage right now, so now it will actually match. The rest of the house is looking like they have two-car garage attached to the front of the house. There is no detriment created to nearby properties. Even with the addition, there will still be sufficient separation between the neighbor at twelve thirty-four, which is the most immediately impacted neighbor, and the addition at twelve thirty-eight. And in addition, we have letters of agreement to this addition from the most impacted neighbor. There really is no other place to add a garage addition the way the house is laid out from the lot. Um, the house is set a little bit further to the east, giving you a little bit more room there, and that is the logical location. There's these existing garages there and the driveways there. The request is not substantial. Um, it's, it's seven feet out of twenty feet of setback of the requesting. So it's less than fifty percent. And with the separation of the houses, it won't look, it won't look like it's too close to the property line. No adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. There's sufficient green space behind this addition in the neighbors to the north, so it will not be an impact to them. Um, there's no windows on the first floor of the other house at twelve thirty-four. It's not going to impact that neighbor. It's certainly not going to impact the drainage or the character of the, the neighborhood of the lot. Yes, it is self-created in that you have a number of vehicles that you need to store. But I don't believe it's a significant addition. Anything to add or, or correct?
Could not be used for commercial purposes. They are a delinquent.
Exactly. With that, I will make a motion to grant an area variance at twelve thirty-eight Lake Point Drive to allow a thirteen-foot side setback where twenty feet is required for the construction of a twenty-by-forty-foot garage addition on a point-eight-eight acre parcel. We have an SPL number zero-five-zero, point-zero-one-dish-one-dish-eighty located in an R-one single-family residential district under section two-two-five-dish-nine of the code of the town of Webster. Condition that it will not be living space. It will be not used for any commercial purposes for the price. Mrs. Vola?
Aye.
Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Housen?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Okay, uh, you've got your variance at, uh, twelve thirty-eight Lake Point Drive. Couple of conditions apply. In addition to the special commission that I just heard, must obtain non-necessary governmental permits, including a town building permits. And you have one year meaningful construction set to expire one year from this evening.
Uh, thank you very much.
That's, good luck.
Good night, Peter.
Okay. Next up, we've got eleven oh-three Bay Road.
Eleven oh-three Bay Road Shed located at eleven oh-three Bay Road. Applicant Wade Selfworth is requesting an area variance to allow a five-foot setback where fifteen feet is required. Associated with the construction of an eight-foot by twenty-foot shed on a point-eight-nine acre parcel giving SPL number zero-nine-three, point-zero-six-dish-one-dish-four located in, in R-three, single-family residential district under section two-two-five-dish-forty-eight of the code of the town of Webster.
Dean?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, like many families with, uh, three small children, my garage is filling up and I need to put up a shed. Uh, if I don't fill the shed soon, my wife's not going to be able to park her car in there. That's going to be an issue, so. Unfortunately, with our block configuration, it is, uh, long and narrow. If you think of having almost an acre, that you'd be able to find a spot in conform with zoning. However, from the south, from the townhouse, uh, condo property there, we have a lot of drainage come down, especially now in springtime. And much of my yard, uh, on, behind the pool and all the way back is inundated with water and just very soggy. Uh, so the best suitable place for the shed is where you see it on the map on the north side of the property line. Uh, I think this form is fine with the neighborhood. Uh, all of my neighbors seem to have accessory structures, uh, even closer than that to the property line. I've spoken to my neighbor next door. He doesn't seem to have an issue with it. Uh, so I'm hoping you won't hate it. Thanks. Oh, and it's a variance of, uh, I think fifteen feet is required. It would be a variance of ten feet to go down to five feet from the property. Thanks.
If you could provide, uh, the, uh, site plan or a, uh, plan of the shed sketch. Uh, it's dated by twenty-two.
I saw the water issue first hand.
In fact, a good day to come. My wife, I should get stopped by.
Now, the water was from, you know, real, fairly to weird. How do you come up with a five-foot side setback? No, it's, except fifteen is required. Why do you come up with five?
Right, so if you, if you look at where the, where the shed is on the sketch, where my garden area is there. I don't know if you saw it, but I get a lot of standing water, uh, right along the edge of the garden area and even in that area. So pushing it close to the property line, I'm not sure if the soil change is there. It gets a little less plain. It's not as wet over there. As it is if I was to, if I was to push it fifteen feet from the property line, uh, it would get into that real soggy zone. And I'd like to, I'd like the shed to last a long time, so try that out.
I'd assume you're trying to respect and keep that as that only feasible play area for your children next to the playhouse?
That's the idea.
Yeah.
There is one other area that you might have seen that's kind of high and dry. It's almost like a peninsula that comes out into the yard, but if I was to use that, I'd have to take down some large trees and it becomes costly at that point as well.
The neighbor's garage is one point eight feet off the line.
Those are Pavil's house. Do you remember addressing this other, um, house in the Kewan though, or the Paul Shuck? Not now?
I don't.
No?
But.
That looks familiar.
Well, we had, we had the potential apartment buildings, uh, that were in the.
That was a thing, yes, a lot of, that were, uh, fashioned. And I looked, looked.
But they had, they had certainly much closer than, because it's a tiny lot, but it's all record, but it's still. I, I know when I visited the property, just based on, um, where the water was, I managed to visit the rain. That the south side of the lot was wet. It, it's just, you get a lot of drainage from those townhouses and, um, we actually live not far from there and there's like a clay name that runs through there, so half of our lot was standing water all the time. And the other half has been fertilized, fertile, stand soil. So I completely understand. There's some odd things along that side of the road. But, but with the, um, the hedgerow tree line, it, it's, it would be invisible to any, any of the impacted neighbors in that location, whereas any place that you move that to be more in conformance would be ultimately invisible. Less, less discreet, yes.
I just added up the numbers. The lot is only eighty-nine feet wide, appropriate for the sidewalk. At the road, it shows ninety-five minutes up at an angle. So it's only eighty-nine feet wide. Which would work in the elements, but it's a narrow lot.
Uh, this meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. If you would like to call in, please dial eight-seven-two-seventy-eleven. Pursuant to NYCR section six seventeen and the bar mile code, I'll make a motion for type-two seeker. All in favor? Last call, uh, if you'd like to call in and comment on this application. Correct, what's the number?
Uh, the number is eight-seven-two-seventy-eleven. There you go. I take notes. I'm trying to learn. Be the best, more number I can be. I'm zoning out over here.
No, I'm getting what, uh, what you're calling. All right, uh, we'll close out the public portion of the meeting. And, uh, any further questions or comments from the board? I've got a couple of key issues that, uh, that we all are aware of, is that there are lots with at eighty-nine feet. And, um, the, uh, the stormwater runoff from the neighboring parcels impacts the majority of, uh, of the yard. Um, I think the other key piece here is, uh, to the north, along McEwen and, uh, the house on the corner of Bain and McEwen. It's significantly tree. And I think that was the goal, the, the, uh, I don't think anybody's really going to see this. A five-foot, um, setback will at least allow some, um, access, uh, for making space to mow, uh, around the shed. Uh, that's typically the concern. Anybody have anything else that they'd like to have? I don't think it's out of character of the neighborhood. Uh, as we pointed out, uh, there's a few structures on, at least two of the neighboring properties that are at, at, probably in the same neighborhood of five feet or less setback from the lot line. Obviously self-created, uh, but, uh, would like a place to store some of his, uh, children's stuff, I believe. That's not how the shed property property. If, uh, everybody feels those comments address the standards, we can proceed with the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented.
Mr. Housen?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Mrs. Vola?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Newtown?
Aye. Okay, you've got your variance. Two conditions apply. You gotta get a shed permit and you will need to complete the construction within one year for all of this. Okay?
Understood. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, next on the docket, uh, s-. One time?
Sixteen thirty-four Glendown Terrace Edition located at sixteen thirty-four Glendown Terrace. Applicant Robert Schlegel is requesting area variances to allow a ten-point-five-foot side setback where fifteen feet is required and a forty-three-foot rear setback where fifty-five feet is required. Associated with the construction of a walkout basement addition on a point-four-four acre parcel with an SPL number zero-five-zero, point-zero-four-dish-seven-dish-seven located in an R-two, single-family residential district under section two-two-five-dish-ten, code of the town of Webster.
Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name and, uh.
My name is Robert Schlegel. I live at sixteen thirty-four Glendown Terrace in Webster. With my wife Diane. Um, she's in the front of the unit here tonight, but she's attending a physical therapy appointment, so she's not here. Uh, our intention is to build a single-story addition onto our home, um, for purposes of leisure, recreation, exercise, uh, and entertainment. Uh, we are on a hill, basically. Our lot drops about approximately eight feet from our front door to our rear basement door. So we have a full walkout basement, uh, full window allowed in the basement. And our intention is to build the addition onto that so the floor levels will match that existing basement. The location of the proposed position is behind the garage and also along the rear twelve feet of the garage. Uh, our intention is to put an interior stairway leading from the garage down into the new addition. Uh, so we don't have to go outside in the winter time, um, to get to the new addition from the garage. Uh, we also put the location there. Um, I believe it minimizes the impact visually, um, Glendown Terrace. We do back up to a retention pond and a cloche de l'huile art district. We're running on terrace, we do back up to a retention pond and a cloche de la vie in Hart District. So the neighbors behind us are at least two hundred feet from our house. The addition will be a single room, multipurpose, looking for a golf simulator setup, exercise equipment, movie theater, entertainment, and a few seats. The garage currently right now, I have used a simulator in the garage. However, it's very cold out there in the winter time and my wife's car doesn't fit in the garage in the winter time. So we're looking to alleviate that and also the space in the garage currently is not adequate enough for grandchildren to be out there with me, the space is just too confining and there's not enough space around that. The addition is sized the way it is to allow space for the golf impact screen, adequate distance from the screen, also area to swing a golf club, and also a safety zone around the course of swinging a golf club, as well as a few seats and all the various other size equipment in the room. If you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer anything for you. I believe there are a number of statements the board received of support from seven neighbors, it's a point project.
Yes, we did, we received six letters. Six? All of which will go on record. Um, let's do this quickly, that is sixteen sixteen thirty-six Glendown Thomas Sharp, can't read the writing. John Kinsella at sixteen thirty-two Glendown Terrace. Nick Ainge at sixteen thirty Glendown Terrace. Tracy Robert Toldich, I'm not sure, yeah, we did. Sixteen forty-five Glendown Terrace. Colleen Jau Jau, it's, anyway, I'll sixteen thirty-eight. Sixteen thirty-three Glendown, I heard this one, Jeremy Seaver. And James Vitale at sixteen forty-one Glendown Terrace. All of their support. Okay. Any questions or comments?
Well, the visiting of the site, you see the addition from the road unless you're absolutely absolutely looking at a kitty murder from the neighbor to the west side. Really doesn't affect the front at all. The project is adjacent to a heart, heart district, which will not really be anything to the back. Actually, the applicant stated the topography does show up from the front to the back. Quite a bit, it's going to minimal impact, I think it's from the front. I really didn't see the addition very promising.
And it just the building addition doesn't parallel the lot line, they kind of go away from each other, it's only the front corner. In that, the addition there is twelve feet of it. And the requested variance is ten point nine two feet, but you go back another six or eight feet, you probably will maybe that's twelve, back twelve feet on the thirty-six foot addition, it meets the fifteen foot setup.
I agree with John, when I visited the parcel, the bed lap drops off quite a bit, so you're really not going to see this from the road. It's really, it's not going to look that place at all. And it should be noted that the two neighbors, the neighbor that would be impacted the most would be the neighbor at sixteen thirty-six and also the neighbor at sixteen thirty-two, and he called seven letters of support to the board. And they're the only ones that are really going to know what's there. Between the trees and the retention pond, the people on the next street behind are not going to see it. It's a great idea.
Yeah, it's well designed to the style of the house.
It will be over when it's done.
My sorry, sir.
Pursuant to my CR section six seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two seeker.
Second?
All in fair.
Aye.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application, if you'd like to call in, please dial eight seven two seven zero one one. Okay. Last call, eight seven two seven zero one one. We'll close out the public portion of this meeting and return the discussion back to the board. I think we've clutched on a lot of the items in the standards, multiple five standards, anybody want to add anything different? We talked about the fact that you're not going to really be able to see much of the addition from the, from Glendown Terrace, we're talking only corner of the front portion of the addition is in the fifteen foot setback. The rest that meets the fifteen foot setback. As Mr. Housen and others pointed out, there's a parkland district behind it and there's a retention pond, right? Not in the house as well. So nobody on the rear lot line is going to be impacted by this. And last, we have the grants of support. With that being said, any appearance of a motion?
Oh, I have a question. Make motion, grant area variance, area variances, property located sixteen thirty-four Glendown Terrace, advocate Robert Schlegel. To allow a ten foot, five, ten point five foot side setback where fifteen feet is required and forty-three foot rear setback where fifty-five feet is required associated with the construction of a walkout basement addition on a point four four acre parcel, heavy SPL number zero five zero point zero four dash seven dash seven located in R two single family residential district under section two twenty-five dash ten.
Second?
Yeah. I'll also just to note, to officially go through each of the five standards that I would recommend, we just adopt what he's listed on his application as well.
Mr. Goron?
Aye.
Mrs. Dola?
Aye.
Mr. Housen?
Aye.
Mr. Steffenbeck?
Aye.
Distributor?
Hi. You have your variance, couple of conditions apply, no necessary governmental permits, including a town building permit and one year meaningful constructions that expire on your permission. Thank you very much. Thank you. Last, at least.
Well, you corks them, they come back.
They can take them. One of them has the best favor, I'll tell you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Oh wait, I need to do a checkered, sorry. Twelve forty-six Lake Point Drive accessory building, located at twelve forty-six Lake Point Drive. Advocate David Baron is requesting area variance to allow a seven foot side setback where twenty feet is required associated with the construction of a twelve foot, a twenty-four foot accessory building and a point seven acre parcel with an SPL number zero five zero point zero one dash one dash seven eight located in an R one single family residential district under section two two five dash nine recorded from town boards.
Thank you. Did I state your name now?
Sure, my name is David Baron, I'm the property owner at twelve forty-six Lake Point Drive. I'm requesting an area variance for a seven foot side setback to construct a twelve by twenty-four accessory building. This building will replace an existing twelve by ten shed that's in the back property, the back back lot, every line. The reason for this location, essentially I gave you some CAD drawings and so forth. I have two existing concrete pads, one's in the west side of my property and one's in the rear of my garage. And the purpose of placing the building at the location I'm asking for is it'll be it'll be placed on top of that, high, with a greater elevation, above water, firm, flat area, and vice versa. Which no other area of our property currently has. These two concrete, one's the driveway access area would almost leak this building to give me access in the driveway to to have access for snowmoo equipment, lawn equipment, right to the driveway, as well as access to the deck and patio area in the back of the house. Once again, no other area has the combination of these benefits than what I'm proposing. The other thing I want to point out too is on the survey by property, you'll see how the house itself, the house is kind of slanted toward the property line. This accessory building will minimize only a small area of my neighbors, except them, a smaller area. Obviously, as the shed, as you're walking away from the shed, the area will increase. So it's only a small area to look back at. I also want to point out too that currently, I bought the house a few years ago and based on the survey, the corner of the house is eighteen foot away from the property line. It's under the twenty foot setback already. As well as I have an existing shed, which I mentioned will be coming down, that's five, five foot away from the property line. So I'm already competing in that twenty foot setback and my neighbors, if I had included letters of support, they have no problem with my seven foot setback request. I looked at alternatives, maybe moving the structure to the side, to the east. You'll see on my CAD drawing there, I have stairs coming up the back of the house that were blocked, building a block of stairs, so I can't move it, move it east. I initially planned to put this structure on the concrete driveway so it'd be in line with the driveway next to the garage. If I did that, it would be even closer to the property line. I'm leaving a smaller setback. So I think I found the best combination of a reasonable location, give me benefits accessibility, all weather conditions, as well as having, you know, give my neighbors some space there on the side and give me a nice firm elevated foundation. Also, too, the rendering, little hand drawing, you want it to look like. Most of the structure, we defined the building. The visible area that would be seen through the screen would be sided next to the house. Two doors that will open up and allow accessibility to the driveway.
Josh, do we have any data on the existing variance? There wasn't. So we got a little cleanup to do. We turned it up. The existing structure. Yeah, well, if approved for this variance, would that not cover the side setback or anything?
You understand, I'm seeing a side setback for the interior layers, that you're seeing the variance just for the existing structure. The house is clearly a builder. If there isn't a variance for the existing house, we'd have it put on its own.
When is the house built?
Have to be late.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, somewhere in there, I could find out.
So it may very well predate current R one regulations.
No, it doesn't. Well, we have to look into that.
Yeah.
We'll proceed with this, we may have a cleanup by tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Any questions, anything else?
I think that's all I have to say, any questions? Like I said, I'm just trying to make the best use of what I have, you know, on the property right now.
What's the space between the house and the accessory building?
Two foot.
So why would you want to connect the two?
Connect the garage and the accessory building? You know, I'm doing some work on the deck, this guy, so forth, and I spoke to the contractor about that and he came to the cost and we're outrageous because of so. So I decided to keep it separately, bring in a pre-built structure, the cost was significantly less and I can still use the same functionality for storage for bikes and equipment and lawn care. It'll be accessible to the nearby.
So it's a prefab? It's a prefab that you're proposing?
Yes, it is, yes.
Then I think you call it a deciding matching house.
Exactly, I'm going to the best I can, I'm going to try and match it.
Did you consider turning it otherwise?
I did, well, that was my third option, I did three different options, I gave it out in the CAD system. If I let it, if I kept it going to the length of the property that way, I would get about two and a half times more stone to support, it kind of drops off from the concrete pad to support it. I would also lose my accessibility to the driveway for the direct access to that side driveway, the concrete pad. And on a smaller note, if I did so, would the wind begin from the north side? I would have a drift going to the side doors, if I wanted to get the snow quick outside in the winter, I'd have to dig out the door before I would before I'd have to get it, so positioning it along the backside of the house blocks the wind and giving me an area to open the doors along the concrete driveway area.
Guess where all that snow's going to go?
Where's that?
Between accessory building and the garage.
Oh, I I'm working on that too. So I've been, I've been thinking about this for a quick year and a half now, different scenarios, and kind of figure out what the best, cost wise and feasibility and this is the best option I came up with. Is what I have. One thing I want to point out as well, while you had your attention, is the, seeing that you're in CAD drawing, you're even surveying, the length of accessory building will not go past that concrete driveway area, it'll be hugging, it'll be away from that edge of it, so it'll allow for more, I guess, open space, a little more space. I did have the option, I could give you a longer accessory building to go right to the concrete, but I think maybe if I was keeping it purely away from there, a little twenty-four foot.
I know you said you've been thinking about it for a while, but did you possibly consider, I know you're trying to utilize that concrete slab, but sixteen by sixteen building you go further from lot line and still not over the steps that are where the garage?
So you're saying go longer on the width?
Or just make the building square instead of long?
You know.
Let me, let me explain.
Sure.
A lot of times, you know, we've been shed variances, have barrel rods and that sort of thing. The last one, barrel. Just closer to lot line, typically a lot, you know, for, for shed, for instance, in this, in this zone. Now, we did have the other garage, you know, thirteen, it's not, it's not that.
That was attached, so. That was attached, right? This one's not attached. Yeah. Plus, you know, are, are they not proposing to build a foundation underneath the building in the area where your can, can use right now?
We have, I have to put down a, with a plan of a crushed stone base in that area, so it'll have pressure treated timbers that perimeter around here with stone under the area with grasses now and the rest will lie in the concrete, with the concrete.
Those may require your foundation.
That's what I was just looking for, so accessory structure, but it doesn't specify what would be required, you know.
Then the driveway or the house will show, and while you're trying to avoid the risk of the house.
Yeah, it doesn't, the definition of accessory structure doesn't talk about what it requires in the definition. Accessory building, what I had so. When, when the definition of accessory structure define what you, what it means?
Not the survey.
That's determined by the, that's determined by you.
We, we have variants where people have two sheds and they have a form of a accessory structure, you know, a slab or. This one.
Right, that they were a shed, that they were an actual shed size, this is. A shed. Uh, this meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak. So attend, why, see our section six seventeen in the environmental code, I'll make a motion protect you secret, so. All in favor? Uh, this meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application, you can call eight seven two seven zero one one. Eight seven two seven zero one one, if you could state your name and address? Sure, Neil Argento at twelve thirty-eight Lake Point Drive, no surprise to the board, there we keep there. Just a couple of things, I wanted to say, uh, Lake Point Drive's a pretty tight knit group and Mr. Baron here is a new resident that's fit in very well with this type group and we're all just trying to do things to improve and hopefully live well. Evady lies on Lake Point Drive and all these decisions that, you know, six other houses going under construction in that street where it lies, you saw, could go down. And we've all talked to each other before we've gone through the processes of making improvements to our houses to make sure our neighbors are in conforming, or performing, but not upsetting our neighbors before we, you know, draw our ideas. My plans were presented to my neighbor, three different plans were presented to my neighbor before I submitted the plans to do the garage for myself and the same with you here as well. He's gone through a lot of different options and showed us a bunch of different ways he could do this and with the escalating prices, daily prices, escalations with construction cost, it makes no sense. And I have any objection whatsoever to what he's trying to do over there to improve the space, utilize more of the space and not infringe, you know, on the privacy of the neighbors on both sides. Knowing being on the other side of his neighbor at twelve forty-two, the Markowskis, the Markowski's, I know they're in favor of this project and they were, and I, and, you know, they're a pretty tight knit group, so trying to minimize the most amount of destruction on both, both sides. Just wanted to speak on the days we had, not because I felt guilty to do it, but because twelve thirty, Lake Point, Lake Point Drive is a pretty tight knit group as well. Thank you, Mark. Well, it's still. Uh, we'll close out the public portion on this meeting and bring the discussion back to the board.
So twenty by twenty would be allowed as a shed, but this has got to be an accessory structure because of the dimensions and the size, it needs the twenty feet and the two inches.
Now, you, you said you're proposing to demolish the existing shed, which is around five point nine feet off the property line. With, if this variance gets approved, you're still allowed to have a shed, but you're wanting to take the condition for this shed specifically to demolish it and if you get a future set shed being in compliance with the fifteen foot side setback?
Absolutely, yes. I don't anticipate a need for another, for another shed, building.
That's what I said, three car garage.
That reaction, you know.
I, I, I feel like, like there's maybe a sense of trouble with, with the board on this one a little bit, you know, and I, I guess in my, for my perspective, the last variance that we granted in the neighborhood this evening was, what was it? Thirteen feet, you're requesting that's seven point two feet, seven point two inches.
Correct.
So it's, it's a bit greater, four and a half, five feet, no, five feet, a half feet greater than what was previously granted. I guess that's the biggest thing in my mind and I think to Mr. Barun's point of trying to box it up a little bit, get the same square footage, but reconfigure the shape so that it lessens that, that requested impact on that side setback.
I'm not opposed to a variance for accessory building, just the magnitude of variance, but that's why I was thought maybe a different shape of building, you'll still be able to utilize most of that concrete slab.
Sure, um, the reason why the twelve by twenty-four, most sheds you buy, I've researched five different areas for sheds, most standard sizes are twelve by twenty, twelve by twenty-four, twelve by twenty-eight, they don't go wider.
Because they can't transport.
They can't transport.
So they, they suffer, so they, they'll do an eight, eight by twelve, eight by sixteen, and then they have two parts.
And the cost, they do make like garages that are bigger, wider, newer, they're costing, they're more costing, or then, I think I have a good view on what I can get in this size.
I can, I, I'm just, I'm gonna speak for it, I'm not against this in any shape or form, I think it meets up with the end of the driveway, I think having a driveway to nowhere makes no sense, I think it actually helps the aesthetics of the property and I think with the strange angle of the house and the variance that we missed during its construction, I think it stays well within the looks of the property, I have no issue with that.
Um, may I include that the variance is less? A house at twelve thirty-eight, the variance is for a forty foot wall, so even though it's less of a setback variance, it's a significant, larger billboard of space as opposed to this only being a twelve foot, a twelve foot's term, so it, while it is closer to the lot line, it's less structure closer to the lot line and I think there's still good forty foot separation between it and the neighbor to the west.
If the house was centered, would the addition?
Yeah, all of the houses are biased to the, to the west.
And it looks like some, it had a bus from the conditions, it never should be lots or the homes. It did not, it happened, just you get the impression, everything seems like it's unloaded to the left side.
It might, it might have skewed the house a little because of the rear setback issue, it should be at least, it's an odd shaped line.
How about you? All right, any final questions or thoughts, anybody care to proceed?
You have a motion? Or a request of the applicant?
Is everyone here retired?
Do you want me to start my first one?
Yeah, we'll come to it.
I'm not guaranteeing it's gonna be smooth and stuff.
He remembers the phone number, now he's a little.
I put forth the motion to grant a variance for twelve.
Did we just touch on some findings?
Did we stop the public?
No, we didn't, just a couple of findings, what did we, what we have, sorry, I don't wanna, I don't wanna stress your thunder, I just wanna make sure we covered the legal requirements.
Put my ass in performance later.
It's not a character, um, the house at twelve forty-two actually has a very similar arrangement with a shed, it's in the garage and kicked over. So if you see portions of the shed in front of it, um, the house at twelve thirty-eight is going to be having additional garage, so it's going to be real sort of a lot line. It, based on the way the houses are shifted to the west, it's, because it's where the driveway is, there's really no other logical place to put it and yet, um, it does cause it to have a side setback. As far as accessory structures go, um, it's really not, it's not a gearish size, it's, it's twelve by twenty-four, which is, just, I think it's perfectly larger than what we required for the maximum shed size. Well, it's. It's a self-created, yes, but it is a logical location. I just don't have the big enough to store so many personal drawers and, and check those rooms.
And it certainly seems like he's thought about this for a long time on the scenario to come up, are you an engineer?
I was.
No, we, we have a code, but apparently the neighbors love the idea, so I mean, we have support from the neighbors, so who might have? The neighbors are the ones who asked.
My turn. I'll support the motion to grant a variance for twelve forty-six Lake Point Drive's accessory building located at twelve forty-six Lake Point Drive. Advocate David Baron is requesting an area variance to allow a seven-foot side setback where twenty feet is required associated with the construction of a twelve-foot by twenty-four-foot accessory building on a point seven one acre parcel having SPL number zero five zero point zero one dash one dash seventy-eight located in an R1 single-family residential district under section two two-five dash nine of the code of the town election.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Mrs. Dola?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Barun?
Aye.
Mr. Newtow?
Aye, okay, a few conditions apply, no, they not necessary governmental permits including a town building permit for the accessory structure. One year meaningful construction is set to expire one year from this evening, I think third one, ensure that you work with the, the building on what's required for the accessory structure and the location that it's in, being partially on a concrete pad, et cetera. And then four, um, your, your plan is, so I'll, I'll leave it this way, either move the shed into compliance at fifteen feet and, or seek a variance for it. Or if you demolish this and put a, a loud shed up, it complies with the fifteen foot rear inside setback. Put a little time frame on that, upon the delivery and setup of the accessory structure, you will address this challenge.
And also verify it in the variance on the house?
Yes, I think, um, and then you can go back in and talk to Josh about the, whether or not we need some cleanup there.
One, he has separate varies, how separate for the house, or is there something?
You, you should do that for home good, because when it's a cell house.
As a matter of fact. You may want to check with your attorney, um, the position of the document investigation of the property prior to the purchase, you purchasing that, he may have found the variance on that. But other than, I think Josh has verified what was granted or not.
Sure. All right.
Thank you.
For your outside? Good evening. Thank you, that concludes this evening's home and board meeting. We'll see you on April twenty seventh.
Good night.
Good night.
We'll need to approve the minutes from March twenty-third. Oh, what? I didn't think I'd see it, I think, you know, I talked about it. Okay, that concludes this evening's meeting.